Then I'm going to go ahead and call this study session, well, actually, a public hearing to order. This is a public hearing on the 2020-2021 district annual proposed expenditure budget. And Mrs. Berry will be presenting it this evening. Mrs. Berry?
Well, Madam President, members of the governing board, good evening. Tonight, we are going to go over a couple of things related to the proposed budget that was presented to you back in the end of June, and that tonight you'll have an action item on to approve as the adopted budget. So I'm going to share my screen so that we can go through a presentation. So if you'll bear with me just a second. Are you seeing the adopted expenditure budget up on the screen?
Yes, Mrs. Berry.
Okay, great. All right. Well, a couple of things I wanted to cover related to the adopted expenditure budget. There are, to start out with, what I'd like to talk about is the budget highlights and changes that have taken place compared to last year. The proposed tax rate, and we're going to go over the tax rate history within Chandler Unified because it's an important time. We just turned in our tax rates and have been reviewing those with the county, and we want to talk to you about the tax rate because that's super important for not only our public, but it's also important for stabilizing what people see when they receive their tax bill in the fall. So we'll talk about that and talk about the history. It's really important to try to keep that as flat as possible so people don't see a huge increase or decrease. We're going to talk to you about ADM changes, and we will talk to you about how we built the budget, and then I'll probably talk a little bit about the future. Budget highlights, we're going to talk about levy, which means tax-related funds that come from either our property taxes or the state. Then we'll talk a little bit about non-levy funds, which are cash funds that we bring in revenues throughout our district locally to fund different programs within our school district. The average teacher salary is required to be posted on our website, and it was, a couple of years ago, it was a change in the budget form, so we'll go over that piece. We'll also talk about the overall M&amp;O budget increases from our, what's called our NP5000, which is our new program's 5000, and we'll go over the increases and decreases within those budgets and those different expenditures. And then we'll talk about the upcoming reports and revisions to just review, not only with the board but with the public, since this is a public hearing, what those revisions look like. We, this is a little different than it was last year. We're always required to do a public hearing. We advertised in the newspaper. We also put information on our website to talk about our hearings. We have a truth in taxation hearing also. We asked for input from the public, and if they wanted to, they could email us any questions or concerns. We didn't have any emails as of five last night, and so I'm just going to be able to answer any questions that you might have after I get done presenting. All right. The next, first thing that we're going to talk about is the tax rate. The tax rate this year will be at, it'll be on the right side of the screen. It will be 6.4224, and it might slightly go down after we finalize with the county on a couple of things, our Q-SAP bonds and a couple of other coupons that we have. But ultimately, we are slightly less than where our tax rate was last year at 6.46. So the difference, our secondary tax rate actually went down slightly at .03, and most of that is due, and we're going to talk about that, to our override. The primary tax rate went down by .01 cent. So ultimately, why did those go down? Well, I'm going to show you a comparison here first. So you can see, we track every year. We start to show where are we at, and one of the most important things we want to do is we want to make sure that it's as consistent as possible. That's important. So we, ultimately, you can see our bond tax rate, one thing we do is we want to make sure that it's not higher than what the voter pamphlet has shown, and we stay with underneath what we told the taxpayers that we would be at. It's really important for us to keep that at the level that we made those commitments to our, ultimately, our residential owners and commercial owners, taxpayers within our school district. Our override has slightly gone down, and the majority of that reason is because we can only claim for a 15% tax, a 15% increase on our tax rate, and our assessed values have gone up a lot more than ultimately, we only can tax at 15%. So you're going to see a slight decrease on that. And then the primary tax rate has gone down. You can see this, and the reason for that is because assessed values in the state have gone up, and therefore, the qualifying tax rate set by the legislature has ultimately gone down because assessed values go up. So our district in particular, really specifically results of the change. The overall tax rate decreased by .04, which is about a .07% decrease, and really, that majority is related to the qualifying tax rate across the state. Like I said, the assessed values had gone up, so therefore, the legislature decreased the qualifying tax rate set by them in the spring, went from $3.79 to $3.67. Our truth in taxation for our district, which is also on the primary tax for adjacent ways, went from zero to .012. And that's what we're going to talk about later on in our truth in taxation, is that we're budgeting $4 million for adjacent ways to help us with our new high school. We have a certain amount of money in our adjacent ways now to help with the new elementary, and we are going to be spending approximately $4 million to help offset the access for roads that will be accessing to the new high school and the utility lines that are pulled to and from between city property and ultimately the school district. That will only, that tax will only be for one year, and it is .12, which equates to on a $100,000 home, it would be $12.59, so almost $13 on a $200,000 home, that would be almost $26 on a $300,000 home, that would be about $39. Ultimately, that's only for one year. You have to tax that full amount in one year. That is one thing the governing board is allowed to tax for is adjacent ways. So that's a slight increase to the overall property tax. And then the override decreased. It went from 1.33 to 1.30 due to, again, assessed values going up, but ultimately collecting 15% of our maintenance and operations budget. And then the bond stayed almost exactly the same. It did not change. Assessed values, though, in our four properties that we compare every year and bring that back so that we can kind of show an example of how it's going to impact properties. We do know that assessed values are increasing in our state, and they have increased. Every house is valued a little bit different, but ultimately, overall, we know that it's increased by approximately 5%, and taxpayers see that a little bit different based on their home and where they're at. Sorry about that. I popped down on the screen a little bit too fast. All right. So here are a couple of things that we want to talk about really quick related to the primary and secondary tax rates. One question we always get asked is how do we compare? And how do we compare to other school districts? And we've been doing that for a number of years, and I apologize, I keep hitting the down button too quick. So here is the tax rates from last year. As you can see, Chandler, we were at 6.4 on the right if you combine the primary and the secondary tax, and you'll see that $6.46, and then you can see Gilbert at 5.9, and then you see Higley, Mesa, Queen Creek, and you can continue to go down on each of those. I apologize. Each time I hit my button on my screen, I'll be more careful. I popped down too far. All right. Next year's proposed tax rates. You're going to see that Chandler is at 6.422. You're also going to see that Gilbert is at 6.25 now. We also have a 15% override. They're just entering into a 15% override for the first time, so that's why they're slightly came up from last year. But we also have a little bit more outstanding in bonds than they do. We've been growing and adding new schools where they haven't. So that's part of that reason that they're slightly below us. Higley Unified School District is higher than us. One thing that we have, they have bonds in place that are a little bit higher because they don't have quite as much assessed value as we do, so that's why they're slightly higher than us. You can see Mesa is higher than us in that they've got, in a sense, compared to their assessed value, their bond rate, they paid their bonds off in a shorter time period than us, so that's some of the reason that they're higher. Queen Creek is a large, growing district with a number of schools, and so, and they have little assessed value related to commercial and residential property, and so that's why their bond rate is higher and ultimately putting them at a higher value. And you can see a couple of those schools, Tempe and Kyrene and then Tempe High School. It's important for us to keep that tax rate as low as possible, and we do have a good assessed value base, so that's really important and it's great for the growth of our school district. Here are the four properties that we mentioned earlier. The estimated tax liability for Chandler Unified School District, we've been using these four homes for a number of years. Mr. Worth had put this together years ago, and it shows all the way back on this spreadsheet from 2012 what each of these homes paid. Now, their assessed value was different back in 2012 and obviously has grown over the last 10 years, and you can see what the new assessed value and what we estimate the new tax, what the new tax, just the Chandler portion, will cost our taxpayers. You can see that it's a slight increase for each of these homes when you look at 2020 and then what we believe their new tax bill will be for next year. And the majority of that reason, even though we slightly decreased in our tax rate, ultimately, all four of these homes have increased in their assessed values, so therefore, they're going to have a slight increase on their taxes. So I wanted to show you that. So even though there is a slight decrease on the tax rate, there is a slight increase in actual dollars paid because the assessed value of each of these homes have increased. The next thing I want to cover is just average daily membership. A few years ago, we went from prior year funding to now we are actually at current year funding. So ultimately, we, you can see how we've grown every year, but now we are funded specifically on the number of students who come, are attending in the fiscal year that we're operating. So right now, we're in fiscal year 2021, and we will get funded based on the students who are enrolled from day one, which will be for us August 5th, and then we'll go all the way through the 100th day. Ultimately, we had planned when we did our projections that we would grow, and then our weighted count would slightly increase. Now, the reason we have more, we originally put in 100 students, but the reason you see slightly more than 100 students is because our students from summer school equated to not quite 300 of those students, but a chunk of those students come from summer school. And if you recall, we had a number of kids who came and attended summer school in June and July, and we got an additional .25 for each of those students, so we have included that portion in our overall ADM. Now, this year, it's going to be a little different. We will still get funded based on our ADM, but we're going to talk on a screen in a couple, in a few slides now. We're going to talk about the stabilization grant that the governor gives us. So ultimately, if we don't reach the numbers that we thought we were going to when we put the budget together in the spring, ultimately, we will be able to be reimbursed through the stabilization grant, and we'll talk about that in a couple of slides. Our growth has been, we've almost peaked, being more that we're almost built out, and we've had a lot of growth over the last few years, especially as we've built a couple of our new schools. The levy funds. Our levy funds are critical. They're the main funds within our school district, our maintenance and operations, our capital funds, our Prop 301. All of those are the majority of the funds that we use to operate our school district. This year, after the legislative session, we were updated with all the new increases to our budgets. So the base support level set by the state and the legislature went from $4,202 last year to this year, it'll now be $4,359. So what does that include? Well, it includes inflation dollars, which equates to about 72%. It was 1.74, and if you can recall, the Proposition 301 allowed us to, and once the lawsuit was settled related to Prop 123, ultimately, we will always receive the greater or the less, I should say, the less of inflation or 2%. So if inflation were 2.5%, we would get 2% added to our base every year. If inflation is 1.74, like it is this year, we get the lesser of 2% or inflation, and this year it's inflation. So if inflation had been 2.5, we would have gotten 2%. If inflation is less than 2%, we would get the smaller amount, so that's why we get 1.74. Teacher compensation is a part of this piece. This is our third year of the Governor's 20 by 2020, and the portion that goes into maintenance and operations, the last leg of this is 5%. Two years ago, the governor gave a 10% increase. Last year, he gave a 5% increase, and this year, he's giving an additional 5%. However, only approximately 3.5% of this is in our maintenance and operations fund. The other 1.5% is in our Prop 301 funds because there was one year of a bridge that the state is going to use money to help offset that 5% and is taking it for Prop 301. So only a certain portion is in our maintenance and operations budget. The other part is within our Prop 301 dollars. Our teacher experience index has grown by .118 to 1.019. This takes into consideration, we turn in our school district employee report in the fall every year. We compare our teachers and the years of service they have within our school district, and we turn it into the state, and ultimately, all other school districts do the same thing. And if our teachers have been with us longer than the average, then we get a little additional amount that we can increase in our budget because ultimately, it costs us more for teachers with experience as they move up on the salary schedule. So are slightly increased, and so we got to increase our budget because of that. Our transportation support level increased slightly. It went up by 1.86 from 1.86, or 1.86% went $2.69 to $2.74, and again, that's part of Prop 301. We will always get the increase of inflation on our transportation dollars. So that's why you see that increase, and then we have also increased in miles. Our district additional assistance, this was, the governor restored our capital over a five-year period of time, and we, there was a slight increase again this year. We were hoping for it to be completely restored, but the governor ultimately covered half of what we didn't get reimbursed, or what we didn't, or the cuts were last year are only reduced by 50%. So not a whole, but we're getting closer and closer to almost being back to fully funded in our district additional assistance. Prop 123 settlement, one of the items within the Prop 123 settlement was that it would originally get, there was $50 million that was part of the package of the Prop 123 settlement that would go to school districts, and then this year, it would increase to $75 million that would be divided to school districts. So the settlement increased that line item for us in our budget, our maintenance and operations budget, by about 50%, which was about $1 million for us. So that was a great increase for us that helped offset some of those salaries and benefits in our, in our budget. District additional assistance, we are, the full amount for capital would be $21,848,000. We are only reduced now by about approximately $3.3 million. Last year, that was $6 million, so that 50% cut equated to about $3.3 million, so our overall district additional assistance was $18.5 million. I started in the school district in Chandler seven years ago, and back then, we were getting approximately around $2.5 million in capital. So the restoration of district additional assistance has been a huge win for school districts, and we hope to see that increase and continue to eventually get inflation on that, see that number increase even more. So ultimately, our unrestricted capital budget, when we take the $18 million we receive, and then we have some of our carryover in our textbook line items and our furniture line items and our vehicles, $26 million in the budget capital. Our highlights for our non-levy funds, and those are, there are a few, and I apologize, Actual Prop 301 is part of a levy fund, and that should be on the other screen, but ultimately, 301 is a levy fund, and that amount went from $434 down to $425. Now, it actually went down quite a bit more than that, but ultimately, that 5% payment from the governor for the teachers 20 by 2020, there's a portion of that that he had to put into the Prop 301, otherwise, we would have seen a decrease. So the only major area our teachers will see a decrease in is that performance pay was at $3,500. Now it's at $3,200, so they're going to see a slight decrease of $300. The rest of the amount of the one, that 1.5% of the 5% salary increase is also buried within that $434. So for one year, we will take a portion of that out to fund our 5% rate that we are giving to teachers. The school facilities board funding and for land and new construction is at approximately $17.5 million. That's for the new high school. We are going to receive additional dollars for the second phase of the new construction. We also, in our results-based funding, we are projected to get, we are projected to get around $1.5 million. We are waiting on, that's the carryover amount, but we're waiting on the allocation for next year. It could be up to $3.5 million like it was last year. We have $1.5 million to carry over, and we believe that we're waiting on additional about $3.5 million, potentially up to $3.5 million. Our college credit by examination incentive program, we received about $850,000. We think we'll be receiving about that same amount. We're just waiting again because test results have not came out. Once we receive those, we should give a new allocation. So both of those budgets are not in there except for what we think the approximate carryover is, and we will update you when we do the revision on both of those accounts. Community education and food service budgets have increased. Again, Prop 206 has required us, as we gave increases, increased the base salary within each of those areas, so those budgets for salaries and benefits, which are majority of those budgets, have increased, and then we gave raises according to SuperQ. So that has definitely increased. Federal grants and state grants will be updated in September after we do our completion report and as grants are awarded. So we have been applying for a number of grants, but some of those grants you're not going to see within this original budget because we're going to wait till we're awarded, and you will see it in the revision in December when we bring it back to you. There are four different areas that are under the CARES Act, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. There are four areas that you've probably been hearing about either within the governor's presentations or documentations you've received on them, and I wanted to talk about each one and how it impacts Chandler Unified. There's four areas. The first one is the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund. Those are really what we keep calling the CARE dollars because that's that significant amount each of our school districts received. We received three point, we will be receiving $3.2 million. It is over an 18-month period of time, starting all the way back in the middle of March. We have allocated that currently to go toward these computers that we purchase, students and staff, and ultimately, we'll receive that in a reimbursement of $3.2 million. The Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund is called the GEAR when you hear from that, and it's targeted to schools and students that are most in need. We'll talk, and I'll show you a slide on a few of those. Then there's the CRF, which is called the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And that amount, there's $200 million allocated from that, and that's where we will see a lot of our stabilization when the governor talks about stabilization funds related to our ADM. That's the money that we will all be applying for to receive that will help us either with stabilization or with funding online at 4.1.0, depending on which scenario is better for us. The last one is important. It's the Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. That's the DEMA dollars, and there is a chunk of money available at our state level for reimbursables for PPE, overtime. We're hoping maybe even some of our technology piece of equipment, we haven't got authorized for that, but there's a chunk of money to help assist school districts, nonprofits, churches, things like that, with helping with the coronavirus and ultimately preparing for, to open up either if it's the nonprofit or school district. Now, so the first one, the Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund. A little bit about that, that we are allocated based on Title I, our Title I state allocation, so they took the dollar amount received in Arizona and they divided it based on the percentage of Title I dollars that we received. For us, that's equivalent to $2.2 million. We're currently a federal program director who's working with our private schools to determine their eligibility and participation. It's retroactive, like I said earlier, until March 2020, and ultimately, it can be utilized for any COVID-related expenses. So we will use every penny of those dollars and are thankful for that. But for us, it's $3.2 million. I'll give you a number. I think for some of the older school districts, there will be, they have a significant, a more significant amount, and then there's some school districts in the state who receive very, very little Title I, and they're not, they have hardly received any money in that category. The Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, which is GEAR, has a number of areas that make up, I think it was approximately $69 million. There's $6 million for the Arizona Teachers Academy, $40 million to expand broadband out to those rural communities which desperately need it, especially with having virtual classrooms starting in August, not being able to go in person. $20 million for access for high-needs schools, $1 million for micro grants to support innovative programs. There's money for the Arizona Blind School to buy vehicles. There's some, about $700,000 for leadership development for beat the odds leadership, and then $500,000 for tutoring from TCH for America. So if there's anything that we do qualify, we will. Majority of these are not targeted towards our school district, but again, as we learn more and more, there might be some avenues for us, but the majority of these funds will not be directed towards Chandler Unified. It's more towards the remote areas, other areas that have high needs. The third category we will access and utilize, again, this is the Coronavirus Relief Fund, and ultimately, the governor is using this as his enrollment stability grant program, and we have two options underneath that. If you go back to the executive order, I think it is Executive Order 41, you can see there's two options. Option one is what's the hold harmless? It's 98% of your ADM from 2019 to 2020. So ultimately, this year, if our ADM is less than last year's ADM, and it's not 98% of what last year's ADM is, they will hold us harmless and be able to reimburse us up to 98% of our ADM from last year. The second option is they will look at what is our 40th day, and if our ADM count on that 40th day, they'll take every online learner plus every student who is a brick and mortar or a virtually online student, and they'll take, and they'll count them as 1.0. So each child, instead of, because how online is calculated right now, is a full-time online student under Arizona revised statute only calculates those students at .95. And so they will count under this method, they'll count every child, no matter if they're an online student or they're a brick and mortar student, and they'll count every child as a 1.0 FTE, full-time equivalent student. If we are still growing, and if all of our students return, then ultimately, this method could be better for us at this point because we'd be able to claim all of our students as a 1.0 FTE, and then we could use that to ultimately backfill because currently, our Arizona revised statute will only give us funding in our maintenance and operations fund for each of those kids at .95, and then we would get the additional .5 piece back from this grant, the stabilization, to make up for that difference. We all know that at the beginning or about into probably day 20 to day 40 of which, which one we will utilize depending on how many enrolled students we have here in Chandler Unified. The worst-case scenario, just ultimately, if we do lose 2% of our funding and students do not come to Chandler Unified School District as projected or decide that they want to wait to enter their kindergarten student, or they've just decided that they would like to choose a different opportunity for their kids, and we decrease by 2%, so the M&amp;O funding loss to us would be $7,67,700. So that's because we built into the budget a growth model of 100 students, and then also, we have that summer school piece that's in there, and then 2% loss overall of our ADM. So best-case scenario would be that we actually grow like we projected and that we are still going to get our full ADM related to our closed budget, which is over $330 million in maintenance and operations. All right. The last part of the federal grants from the CARES Act is the Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. It's called DEMA, and this one has, this grant process allows you to get 75% reimbursement for expenditures related to COVID. The examples include your PPE equipment. We have done a number of things like put, we have bought and purchased supplies at all of our schools. Some of the things we've had is from the district and from Frank Fletcher's group has installed different pieces of equipment to make sure that our schools are equipped. And so all of those invoices we have taken, and we will be asking for reimbursement underneath this program for those expenses. There's other things like overtime. We had about $89,000 worth of overtime in the spring. Some of that can be counted towards reimbursement. So we'll be applying for everything that we think was related to COVID over this last spring, if it's PPE, disinfectant materials, medical supplies, any communication, security, overtime, and then we're going to again try. We have some computers, iPads, other things. We're going to submit those. Doesn't mean that they'll reimburse us, but we're going to definitely keep trying. It's taken our staff a couple of months to get everything set up, approved, and we have a project manager on site. We actually were able to talk to the governor's office the other day to get some help with some of the processes and just plan some things, hoping to get our projects going, and reimbursement started within this next month. I wanted to cover those four things. There's other funding sources outside of the CARE Act that our school district has been applying for and receiving, and I just wanted to update you on those. We had the No Kid Hungry Grant, Food Nutrition applied for, also the Care Center with our food bank had applied for, so about $17,000 worth of grants in those areas. We also, through childcare, were reimbursed for our students who qualified for DES, Department of Economic Security, and we were, we did receive money for each of those schools for lost revenues for students who would have been participating, participating in those programs, and were not able to due to school closures. Arizona Community Foundation, the food bank also received money for that, for about $5,000, and then the United Food Bank. So there's other pots of money for small grants, and just wanted to update you on those, and we'll continue to apply for those. Also, the Small Business Account Paycheck. Our Care Center is now under a nonprofit so that we can qualify for the tax credit and then also um, so that we can qualify for the tax credit, and then also run that program, um, through our nonprofit. And we also qualified for, uh, some, some paycheck protection programs, and we received about 10,800, or 10,800. One thing that you're going to notice on the cover sheet of your budget that is important is the average teacher salary has changed a couple years ago, where we are required to publish the average teacher salary. This is an estimate of where we think that the average teacher salary will be, and you can see that the average teacher salary for fiscal year 20, budget year, 62,000, and the average teacher for 19, 59,000. So, there's 2,740 dollar, um, increase at 5%. The next piece that you're going to see, um, is the actual MNO, um, and capital increase in 2019, um, 20 revised budget compared to the 2020, 21 proposed budget. You're going to see that the, um, base support level increased, and remember, the base level support was the inflation dollars, and also the, uh, 5% that went towards the teachers' compensation for the 20 by 2020, it's about, actually, 3.5% because the other portion comes up about 3.1. That was about 10,318,192 dollars. We also had originally projected that we would grow about 100 students within our ADM for 562,000 dollars. Our summer school growth related to the number of kids who came and took advantage of, um, the classes offered this school year, um, in June and July, equates to 1 million, uh, 1.7 million dollars. Um, additional transportation route miles increased our transportation revenues by about 385,000 dollars. Um, the, uh, plan for, um, eliminating our district additional assistance, um, is now that increase is 3,819,000 dollars. Also, additional overrides due to growth because we're growing, um, that has increased 1,804,150 dollars. So, as our ADM has increased, um, the override is calculated based on last year's, uh, average daily membership, so that's one thing. It's not funded on current year funding, but that increased. So, as our budget goes up, we also get to times that by that 15% um, uh, increase for the override. Also, we had a slight increase in registered, or slight decrease in registered warrants, but a slight increase in ADM, um, from prior years, and then an increase in additional Prop 123 funding related to, remember, the state gave us 50 million dollars to be divided between all the school districts, and now it increased to 75 million dollars. Also, slight decrease in our tuition revenue related to our, our, some of our foreign, um, uh, exchange student, or not exchange students, but for, uh, students from, um, that are coming for an, on an educational visa. We have a slight decrease in how many students are coming over to do that, and think that that might impact next year also, so a slight decrease in that. All of those add up to an increase of 697,000 dollars. Our maintenance and operations, our carryover budget, uh, increased by approximately 724,000 dollars compared to last year's carryover. We have projected that. And then our capital budget increased carryover in that fund by 2.6 million dollars, and, um, those portions we have put into the areas, um, of salaries and benefits for maintenance and operations, and our capital budget that goes into our textbook line item, our vehicle white fleet line item, and then goes over into a carryover to fund the NP 5,000 process for all the different items that our, um, our principals have requested for their buildings that have been improved through that process. An increased total, major changes of 22 million dollars, 22.7 million. Our NP 5,000s, here are the major expenses that were approved during, what NP stands for is new programs, but new programs 5,000 were approximately total is 23.5 million dollars. Majority of that's in salaries and benefits, and there are small areas of other things. We have new teachers at 2.5 million, Prop, um, 206, uh, final pieces, and our salary schedule re, uh, restructure, 130,000, 13 million dollars in compensation increase, which is the 5% that we gave to all of our staff. Um, additional special education staff at about almost 500,000 dollars. Uh, insurance and retirement increases for the state retirement system, 1.3 million dollars. Startup costs for, um, for, uh, Weinberg Gifted Academy, Rice Elementary, 500,000 dollars. Athletic and school capital increases, 1.6 million dollars, and those were related to the NP 5,000 request we talked about earlier. Additional staffing needs, uh, 1.5 million dollars. That's outside of our teachers. That would be in our support service areas or, um, student support areas within our schools. Utilities and general liabilities, 895,000 dollars as we open up to new schools, and just slight increases as utilities go up. And then startup costs, because, uh, WGA will have additional staff. Most of the staff from Weinberg, uh, uh, Weinberg Elementary went over to Rice Elementary with a couple, um, additional staff members, and then as we added teachers to our gifted academy, you're going to see, um, some of those in those lineup. So, school refresh for Shemoyan, um, Humphrey, or also furniture equipment, 360,000 dollars. That added to about 23.5 million dollars. All right, the last thing just wanted to cover with you is that ultimately, um, you will see, uh, there's important things that come up at this point after we have the proposed and adopted budget. The tax rate gets sent to this county schools office. We finalize our budget tonight, and ultimately, the, the, um, county will send the tax rates to the property tax oversight committee once we sign off on that. Uh, the county finalizes it then in August, and then it goes out to our constituents. We have an encumbrance period that takes place in July and August to pay off the bills that we have outstanding from all the purchase orders that we have in place for last fiscal year of 19 and 20. We finish out our grants on September the 30th, and we, um, turn in our completion reports at the end of that month, and then we bring to you usually at the end of September, because it's due by October 15th, our annual financial report that wraps up last year's expenditures. All of that's important, because as we finalize all of that, then our, we know exactly what our carryover is, not what our estimate is, um, and we're able to provide you a revised budget in December that includes all of the carryover amounts that are impacted by, uh, this past fiscal year that we just ended. After we get done paying our bills, finishing our completion reports related to our grants, and reporting to you on our expenditures, we'll then include our carryover and bring you a revision, uh, in December with a final revision in May. At this time, what I'd like to do is open it up to any questions. We have a presentation hearing, um, at 6:45, but I'd love to answer questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry, for a very complete, um, uh, financial report. Um, I guess I'll go with, uh, and start with asking individuals, um, board members as to whether they have any questions. Um, Mr. Evans, do you have any questions about the budget? Mr. Evans, can you hear me, or are you still on mute? He might be having some technical difficulties, so we will go on to Mrs. McGee. Mrs. McGee, can you hear?
Madam President?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yes, I do have a couple of questions for, um, Mrs. Berry, please. Um, Mrs. Berry, on the CRF, I think it was page 16, um, we had those two options, the hold harmless and then the 40th day count, I believe?
Yes.
The hold harmless is based on the 100th day count or the 40th day count?
It's going to be based on the 40th day count.
Okay, so we decide then before the 40th day which option we want?
Yes, we, we will be able to actually, the stabilization money has to be spent by December of 2020. So, they, the reason they couldn't pick the 100th day is because most of our 100th day is after that date, and the state has to spend their stabilization money by December of 2020. So, that's why they picked the 40th day. So, they're going to take the 40th and option one, they'll take the 40th day ADM for this year, for 2020, 21. And if it is less than last year's 100th day ADM in 1920, they're going to give us 98% of last year's ADM. So, they'll, they'll look at the ADM that's coming, coming in this year, and then they'll compare it, and then if we are less than that, they will give us money in the stabilization grant that ultimately backfills that. Same thing with our online. They'll look at our online on day, on the 40th day, and ultimately, they'll count every single student, brick and mortar and online, and if that is more beneficial for us, because that will help the growing district, that potentially could be us. It could not be, depending on how many students end up coming to Chandler during this era, but if, if we do have growth, then we will want to take this option, because ultimately, we'll get funded for every single student at 1.0 on the 40th day, and then we'll be able to pick up that growth, not necessarily in maintenance and operations, but they will ultimately give it to us in the stability grant.
So, so we get whichever one is most beneficial to us?
We, we do. Yes, we do, and, and we helped with that, um, originally. Um, um, our organization was asked, we were on a number of phone calls of how do we do this, and it's really difficult, because our ADM is, is coded from day one through day 100, but we don't know what this school year is going to look like, what we're going to be able to start on time, if we will have to have school closures during the fiscal year, and so, we came up with this option, these two options that hopefully will be best for almost every school district within the state. So, we will know which one's best for us, and we will apply, uh, depending on, uh, which one benefits Chandler Unified.
Okay, thank you. I have one more quick question. Um, somewhere near the end, um, we had budgeted about 562,000 for 100 new students, and then we budgeted 385,000 for extra transportation miles, correct?
Yes.
And those were, numbers were plugged in before COVID, is that correct?
That is correct. So, when we met with our staff, um, we did, we had built, uh, the budget based on 100 ADM, um, and so, that's why we added the 100 ADM in, because that's how we put all of our budgets together. We'll adjust, um, once we know, uh, where ADM, um, will go, based on if our students will, um, enroll in either our, uh, Chandler Online or ultimately our brick and mortar, our virtual. And so, the other thing is our transportation, though, however, is an increase in revenues, and that's revenues are based on last year's miles. So, we'll get that no matter what. It's not an increase in spending, but we'll get that 385,000, because it's based on miles from last year. But the 100 students are included for this year, and that's part of the 7 million dollars right here, where we say, worst-case scenario, if we have to take option number one, we won't get obviously the growth of those 100 students, so that's part of that 7 million dollars. We would lose approximately 7 million dollars in our budget, uh, this fiscal year.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Love, do you have any questions?
Sorry, I apologize. I've been frozen off and on, and so, parts of your presentation I missed, because I kept getting kicked in and out. So, you may have mentioned this, and I think I kind of came back on when you were speaking with Ms. McGee about it, um, but how does funding for online work? And I've been asked, does any of the special education funding go into online, certainly, programs?
So, yeah, so, online funding, it, sorry, make sure I understood your question right. So, you're asking about how does, um, online funding work, and then do we have any special education students who access our online? Is that a question?
Yeah. Yeah, I've just gotten, I've gotten that question a lot from, uh, parents lately who are looking at the online model, um, and don't really know how their kids fit into it. So, I was wondering, like, how is that funded and, um, of that funding goes into it?
Sure, so every student who accesses our online funding, um, we receive point, for a full-time student, we receive .95% of a full-time equivalent for funding, and it goes into your maintenance operation and your capital budgets. If that student is on an IEP, and they qualify for additional, um, weights based on, um, their IEP, there's an additional weight called a Group B. It's also qualifies for that, and that funding comes into our Maintenance and Operations Fund. So, our Maintenance and Operations Budget is around 331 million dollars, and that includes our online funding. So, all students are included in there. It doesn't matter if you are a, um, a regular ed student or a special education student, it's all part of that. If they want to receive services, Kim Marshall is our, um, education, um, services, uh, executive director, and she could definitely help them, um, to talk about the support that she can give them. So, I'd have them reach out, um, and also Jared over at, um, our Chandler Online can also help them and address their educational needs, um, with the classes that they're taking and how best fits their, but that's all part of our Maintenance and Operations Fund.
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation. I learn something different every time you present, Mrs. Berry, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Brunner, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Lena, for, um, this presentation. I really appreciate it. Um, I did have a few questions. Um, can you explain the 1.5% of the, uh, 5% of 2018 rate?
Yes.
For, for why that was moved into Prop 301? I guess my question is, did that get moved over because Prop 301 required certain funding, and so, it's basically supplanting on Prop 301?
No, you know, that was part, and I apologize, I'm plugging my computer, and so, I don't go, um, so it doesn't die on everybody, because I've, um, but, so if there's some noise, I apologize, it's me plugging in my computer. Um, ultimately, what happened with the governor when he put his 20 by 20 plan together, he told everyone, look, there is going to be a gap, um, of funding, um, in the last year, and how he was going to bridge that was he was going to use additional money, um, from our trust land funds, um, in the last fiscal year. So, he, you can go all the way back to the original 20 by 20 presentation that he had. Now, what happened was the School Facilities Board, um, paid off their loan on the facilities that they had built and the money that they had borrowed, and they had, they were, they had it paid off one year early. So, he knew that he had this chunk of money in this fiscal year coming up, in 2021, he could use and put towards his 20 by 2020 payment. So, it's just more of an accounting issue and problem. We knew that there were, he, we wouldn't, they wouldn't have to utilize those dollars to go towards the School Facilities Board, and it freed up that money to help with the 20 by 2020. So, that was part of his plan from the very beginning. It's just ultimately, how do you account for that? So, part of it, 3.5% is in Maintenance and Operations, the other 1.5% is in the Prop 301, um, fund. Next year, meaning next fiscal year, meaning fiscal year 21, 22, all of that will be back in the Maintenance and Operations Fund. He was very clear, um, when he originally put the plan together, that this was a bridge for one year, and he would use the money that typically went to the School Facilities Board, pay off debts, services. He would use those dollars, since they paid it off early, to help with this overall plan for one year. So, we will do some accounting, um, this year to ultimately transfer the expenses over to that fund for that portion, and then next year, it'll all go back into Maintenance and Operations, and those dollars we will see in our Maintenance and Operations Fund. It's more of an accounting piece, um, but it was a way for him to ultimately get to that 20 by 2020.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you tell us how, uh, or which elements of the budget will automatically change with lower revenues this year, for example, 301 or other pots, um, and how we're going to prepare for that? And then also, it, um, what the legislature could choose to do mid-year, although it may not be automatic, if anything? Just know, like, preparation for declining economy?
Sure, so, and to make sure I answered, or I heard your question right. You're asking, um, what pots of money could be impacted, um, with like loss of ADM, I'm assuming by, like, uh, with if we lose ADM, and then how Prop 301, because decreasing is going down, and then what could the legislature take away from us? Was the, am I recapping those questions?
ADM numbers, but you know how there's automatic systems in place? For example, Prop 301 money is calculated a certain way, and when, when, um, revenues are down, I believe that also decreases. And I didn't know if there were other funds like that, where, where it wasn't even connected necessarily to ADM, but just in general, that have these automatic systems in place that could be decreased this year, and what the impact would be for us?
Sure, the great question, actually. So, a number of funds. So, our Prop 301 is based on sales tax. So, um, we were very fortunate that we received in 1920, 434 dollars. The, um, people, they originally thought we were going to have more money than 434 dollars per student, um, and they thought they were going to have a big rollover, and oh, uh, that was a good thing, that we had had three-quarters of great revenues prior to COVID, and that they had projected, they were very conservative in their projections, so we didn't have to take any cuts to, uh, to Prop 301 in 1920. In 2021, they've estimated obviously less money, um, and then they put a little additional money that they're not using towards those debt service funds into that fund, but that fund is very, I mean, it, it's based on sales tax, so if sales tax goes down, we definitely, um, will see a decrease. Now, we have enough reserves in there that we feel like we can get through next year. It would probably impact us the following year. Those dollars are only earmarked for teachers, um, and teacher compensation, so it can't go to other pieces of the budget, um, but we have enough reserves. That's why you always want a little bit of a reserve within those funds, because sales tax is up, you know, it's based on the economy. So, that's a huge fund. Gaming money is definitely another area, and the board will make a decision after the AFR. We talked about in October, giving out, not giving schools money specifically yet out of gaming until October, and gaming dollars come from the casinos. And gaming funds have usually been very consistent over all the years, but ultimately, um, they, the only time you'll see a difference in gaming is when you actually shut down a casino, and we're seeing the shutdown of the casino happen during COVID and for, for the future And we're seeing the shutdown of the casino happen during COVID and for, for the future. So potentially funds within that. Our cash funds are our biggest, biggest worry, no matter what. Um, community ed is a, is a multimillion dollar operating, um, uh, budget for us and, uh, department. And without kids, we have, we serve about five thousand kids and before and after school. And we have, um, little express for our little kids that come in that we serve. And ultimately not serving those students and not having revenue, um, that's a huge impact to our school. This was the last, I think, you know, it cost us a little over two million dollars in the past when we weren't able to serve those kids and those students. Food service is another area where funding not coming in, um, from students, um, eating where we're used to serving, um, you know, over a hundred and some thousand meals, uh, per week and decreasing that revenues coming in. We're at the whim of students either paying or getting reimbursed. We also know that our tax credit potentially will be down, gifts and donations, our parking lot dollars. All of those funds that are cash driven, we are definitely are concerned about. So we're, we're trying to make sure we're educating staff about being very careful with what they budget out of those, knowing that there might not be some, uh, revenues coming in, um, or that it might be less for next fiscal year. Now, the maintenance operations budget though, that's probably your biggest scare no matter what, is that if they decrease, what can the state do? And that would take a legislative action to decrease our budget, uh, sometime through and could happen, um, but hopefully not. Hopefully there's money in the rainy day fund that the governor could use, uh, to offset our budgets to stabilize us. And I know that it's his intentions, or at least it seems like when we've been on, um, conference calls and, um, webinars, that he's trying to use his two hundred million dollars for that enrollment stability grant and that he'll use that rainy day fund if he needs to. But that could be impacted if the legislature comes back and adjusts it also. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it did. Thank you. Um, just one, one last thing.
Yes.
So can you summarize which legislative goals that we sent last year? Um, that were met by the legislature, if any?
So, oh, God, I probably need to go back and review each of those things. So one of the, we haven't obviously solved the Prop one, two, three issue. No matter what, that's always an issue and something that's on the table. Um, but we asked for it to be restored for the capital amounts. Um, and so our unrestricted, our district additional assistance is half cut on that. Special ed was something that we were working on and it did not go through, um, based on, um, just the shutdown of that item. Our school facilities board, we made huge gains in that area. Andy Tobin became the kind of over the school facilities board. And so that was a huge win for us. Um, those are the, the main areas I can think of. I think special ed was hard and the opportunity weight, that was something which was, um, that we were looking at and trying to go after was the opportunity weight. And that didn't go through again either. So those, unfortunately with the, with, uh, the shutdown of COVID, not much of anything at that point went through. It's just pretty much the, the budget that was set forward with the governor that had put in place in January. The only thing that was decreased from that piece was, um, the district additional assistance was cut in half. Um, but besides that, the bare bone budget, um, all that pretty much got approved was what was set out in January and no other initiatives were really taken into consideration after that. You're welcome.
This, at this point, um, I'm going to forego my question since this is, um, we will be coming back to this, uh, during an action item. And since this is our public hearing portion, um, we do have to go through the truth and taxation notice of tax increase. Um, and Mrs. Berry, why don't we go ahead and have you start on that? And, um, if Mr. Evans, I don't know if he's still with us, uh, but he will have an opportunity also, uh, to ask questions during the, uh, action item portion of our agenda.
All right. So Madam President, members of the board, tonight is the truth and taxation hearing. Um, and as you can see in front of you is the truth and taxation notice that went into the newspaper. It's a requirement by statute, uh, to, uh, review the tax increase because it's one area where the voters are not approving, um, the tax increase. It's actually, it's one of the areas that the governing board has the authority to approve. So tonight, um, Chandler Unified School District is asking for an increase of four million dollars for adjacent ways. Um, that would cost a homeowner whose property tax is a hundred thousand dollars. Let's say their home is a hundred thousand dollars. That would cost twelve dollars and ninety-three cents on that home. If not, the tax would be less than point, um, it would be point three four. Um, we have a small amount that's taxed for dropout prevention. Every year we collect two hundred and seven thousand dollars for, um, dropout prevention. And so if we didn't have this four, um, million dollars in there, we'd have this very small amount that we collect that we've been collecting for years. So that's what the notice is stating. The notice to the public just says that we are proposing to increase, uh, the property tax to levy four million dollars. It will cost the taxpayer, uh, twelve point, uh, nine three, twelve dollars and ninety-three cents. So on a hundred thousand dollar home, that's how much annually it would cost them. If you had a two hundred thousand dollar home, it approximately costs you, uh, twenty-six dollars. If you had a three hundred thousand dollar home, it would cost you thirty-nine dollars per year. Now, um, it's important for us, um, if we do not have to do this, the board could say no to this at any point also, um, during this action item later on in the meeting. Um, and we, there is other avenues to utilize that, but we felt this is the best way to access, um, four million dollars for this specific, uh, cause. It's to help us pay for, um, the roadway, this accessing between public property, which is our streets into our school district. Um, and then the utility lines that come in and out of the new high school. We do have a current balance within our adjacent ways account and we are utilizing that for the new elementary school that will be opening, um, in August. So at this point, we're asking for, uh, a tax increase of twelve dollars and ninety-three cents per hundred thousand dollar home. And I am, I'm willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry. So this really isn't a twelve dollar and ninety-three cents increase. It is a twelve dollar and fifty-nine cent increase. Is that correct? Because they will still get a thirty-four cent, um, um, taxation?
Yes.
Okay. So we're looking at twelve fifty-nine. Okay. Are there any other questions from board members on this? Uh, Ms. Love?
I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, Mrs. McGee?
No questions. Thank you.
Mrs. Brunner?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Evans, are you hearing us and can you answer or? Okay, um, he is, he cannot. So we will, this will end our public hearing and we will take about a four-minute break and reconvene at seven o'clock, uh, for our regular, regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you so much, Mrs. Berry. We appreciate your hard work, um, of getting all the budget, uh, stuff ready. And, uh, I know we'll have some additional questions for you, uh, during the presentation for our action item. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.